Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Dodson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hudek. Graham Hudek, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening.
Are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here, and Chairman Green.
I am here. And of course, we have our planning staff, Jeff Goulet, and Connie just, oh, there she is. Okay. And welcome to everybody that came to the meeting tonight in this cold night. Before we get going, it's not on the agenda, but I did want to just take a moment to acknowledge or recognize a longtime servant, public servant, and friend of the Canton community, Mr. John Burzak, who passed sadly this last week or so. For many of you who may have known him, he is as much responsible as anyone for the success of Canton as a Canton trustee, longtime Canton Planning Commissioner up here, zoning Board of Appeals, many other different communities, including, or committees, including being on the election, an election inspector. So he's going to be sadly missed to the community, and my heart goes out to his wife, Yvonne, and his family. So I just wanted to take that moment to say that. We have an agenda item tonight, basically just one item, has many different parts to it, and it has to do with us updating the master plan for the community, which is kind of like our bible of working up here. Before we get to that, we did have a meeting on November 6th. Do I hear a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved. Support.
Okay, we've got a motion and support by, motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, as I mentioned, we have an agenda of one item tonight. Do I hear any late additions to the agenda from staff?
Yes, sir.
And from the commission? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, on with it then. We have a public hearing. Now, public hearings do allow for just that, public comment at the podium. We do ask that you fill out our form and leave it for staff, and when you give your name and address when you speak. Tonight, we have, again, the five-year plan update that we're about to undertake with amendments possibly. Jeff, could you give us more detail on that?
Yes, this is the culmination of our year-long evaluation, five-year update, an evaluation of the plan that we started earlier this year, had some study sessions with the board earlier this year, along with another follow-up study session with the Planning Commission to finalize the amendments. Those are incorporated in sub-items 1 through 4 under the plan amendments. 5 and 6 were kind of add-on requests by individuals that wanted them, we had time to include their requests in the notification that went out. One is the Percy request, which is down on Yost and Sheldon Road, and the other is the Beaumont request, which is down at Michigan and Beck Roads. We'll describe those when we get to those. The first item under the planned date is, the plan updates are the policy changes. Those policy changes you reviewed at the last meeting when you authorized me to go ahead and notice these for a public hearing. The policies included, I've just concluded excerpts from the plan that include those policies, has to do with updates to the mixed-use policies along Michigan Avenue and some of the Lots Road Corridor zoning strategies. These changes would allow consideration of residential uses along the Lots Road Corridor and in specific areas in the Michigan Avenue corridor. The policies support the general consensus of the Planning Commission Board relative to the preservation of open space through the use of plan development and conditional zoning options, providing better interconnectivity throughout the community by extending and filling the gaps and providing into the sidewalk and trail system, integrating a mix of land uses where appropriate to create better accessibility between our commercial and residential areas. So that's item number one. Those are just all written policies in your packet. There's two pages in your packet under item one. They incorporate generally policies, 1.5.2, 1.5.3, 1.5.4, and 1.5.5, along with some updates to the Lots Road Corridor zoning strategies. Policy 1.5.5 is brand-new. This is the one that encourages use of the options to facilitate clustering of buildings, creation of park space, preservation of forested areas and natural features, provision of pedestrian and bicycle paths, and connections to the community's regional trail system. This policy was a direct outcome of the Joint Board and Planning Commission study when we went through that visioning process with the Board earlier this year. The second change to the future land use map is in the northeast quadrant. If you flip to your maps under item number 2, you know, this is basically a representation of what used to be the Lots Road Corridor area, which is no longer part of the overlay district, and we just wanted to reflect essentially the existing and proposed land uses that are already there, you know, more realistically. So the proposed map basically shows the existing residential uses. The one primary change, which you already looked at in terms of a conditional rezoning, was the area on Copernick Road, on the north side of Copernick, that was done as a conditional rezoning. So this is reflected as a medium-high-density residential, consistent with that conditional rezoning, which was discussed earlier in study session also. So that's really the only change. The other changes show the existing single-family areas, the Wayne County Park area, you know, the Mobile Home Park area to the south, which is already existing, and that kind of blocked-in area that's within the dark-black line. So essentially, that's fairly straightforward. The other, next change would be a change to the future land use map, and all of those areas we currently have designated rural residential, there's three sub-areas. In that, the first one is up in the northeast sector, label A. B area is a small area along Napier Road, and the third area is a small leftover area that's already zoned and planned along Denton Road, basically. So the proposal here is just to change those to classifications that are consistent with their adjacent classifications. The original purpose of the RR designation was to encourage use of RE zoning, which is halfway in between R1 and rural residential zoning at, you know, two and a half units per acre, or one per unit, one per two and a half, instead of one per one or one per five. We really haven't had a good utilization of the RE zoning, so it doesn't really make sense from a future land use standpoint to designate it that way any longer. So on the proposed map, you'll notice the area up in the northeast sector and sub-area A is just all designated one per acre. That's what it's projected out on the sewer plan anyway. Area B would be one, was, is two units per acre, which is adjacent to the surrounding area with West Ridge, that's all R2. And the third area is Area C, which is part of the Central Park development, which everything along Denton Road was one unit per acre. So let's, you know, keep it consistent with what Central Park was originally planned and developed out for, it's already built. So we just kind of realigning the future land use map with some of those areas that are already planned for and built. So that's a fairly minor change, it really has no impact on zoning, since it's already zoned. The fourth area is along Michigan Avenue. This is the area that Chairman Green brought up at the last meeting. We have a lot of areas along Michigan Avenue that are designated mixed-use. This particular area along Michigan Avenue between Lots and Hanan Road is pretty much identified as commercial on the corners and light industrial in the middle. By making it mixed-use, would allow consideration of either office, C3, or LI zoning, allow some flexibility. We have a mix of zoning in there anyway, so this would just allow, you know, the kind of the market to kind of dictate that, encourage land consolidation, encourage redevelopment for those areas that may be suitable for commercial. These are very long, deep narrows, narrow parcels, so you have a lot of development on the front ends of those, and a lot of, you know, underutilized land behind some of those uses along. Fifth request is the Percy request. This is a request down in the south end of the township in our industrial area. The dark purple area on the map is heavy industrial or general industrial. The subject site is an area that they've purchased from Poco. They would like to have that considered as general industrial or heavy industrial also. You know, generally, you see kind of a hard line where the general industrial and the light industrial kind of meet. Sheldon Road, we're trying to get classified as a county primary, but it's still a Class B road. So, you know, this parcel, even though it doesn't come out to Sheldon Road, you know, does abut all of the Sheldon Road properties. Planning Commission will need to consider whether or not heavy industrial is appropriate for that area on that particular request. Final portion of the map amendments is the Beaumont area. This was an area that's currently controlled by, was the old Oakwood parcel down at Beck Road north of Michigan Avenue. We have condos to the west and to the north. We've got light industrial research to the south, where Repair Clinic and some of the other Kingfa and some of those other larger industrial buildings are. This area was originally all designated light industrial at one point. Beaumont or Oakwood came in about 12 years ago. They did a plan development. It incorporated some commercial uses in the front, future medical offices along Beck Road, and other kind of institutional-type uses in a campus setting on that 100 acres. That PDD is due to expire next year anyway. Beaumont's in the process of selling that. I think they've got a purchase agreement with a buyer. They put it out for bids. They're here tonight to address why they're making the request to change that to medium-high-density residential. From a sewer standpoint, the sewer, you know, model from Oakwood basically is in, you know, in keeping with the, you know, medium-high-density residential density. They're comparable. The big issue here is whether or not we feel this is an appropriate transition use from the existing attached housing down to our industrial area on Michigan Avenue. You can see we already have condos wrapping around the west and north side of it. There's a drain that runs along the south side, that's a natural boundary between this site and the industrial. You know, staff feels comfortable that would be a good fit from a future land use standpoint, but as the Planning Commission, you need to make the final call on that. So I will, unless you have some questions, kind of, I'll leave it up to you and to public hearing comments on any of those items. I know we have representatives here for items 5 and 6 to address those specifically.
Let's take those in their, the order that you have them listed here? Is it just for ease of handling?
I think when you decide to start making motions, you can do that. I think for the public hearing, you can just open it up and they can identify which area, you know, they're speaking to, and then I'll go back to that map.
All right, why don't we do that? Why don't we open it up for public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and, what's your name again?
Ms. Dodson.
Support by Commissioner Dodson. I hadn't seen you in so long.
Wow. Julia and I will take care of him later.
Okay, all right. No, but it's good to see you. It's good to see you, yes. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is open at 7:15. And with that, I'm going to start at the back and work our way to the front. Anyone want to make a comment on any of these areas that Jeff has described? Yes, sir, come on up. Tell us who you are.
Good evening. My name's Eric Lord, I'm with Atwell, and I'm representing the Marketplace for America, property owners that are on Michigan Avenue, north side of Michigan Avenue, Morton Taylor area, west of the ITC corridor. So they have about 90 acres that they own right there on the north side of Michigan Avenue. That's going to be affected by this text amendment to the master plan. So as you know, that corridor is a mixed-use, future land use designation, which hasn't allowed a residential component to it until this amendment that's being considered tonight, which was great. We've been following that process, and we understand that, you know, the vision is to now include residential component to it. However, the way that the text amendment is written, it's only incorporating MRD, which is a three-story residential component, which is great, and we, we're trying to work with that with our concept planning that we're putting together. However, the challenge that we're having is we've got 90 acres that we're working with, and a three-story residential product, you know, if we limit it to just that, it takes away some flexibility that I think is good for that corridor, is certainly good for this property, and certainly generating some interest for an R6 user and users that we've been working with from our concept planning standpoint. So, you know, R6 is an attached residential product, still achieves a density that I think works for that corridor, allows us the flexibility to go beyond just a three-story. You know, R6 will allow up to two stories, which again, we think is a good component for our mixed-use that we're trying to accomplish here. So again, we're happy with the fact that we're discussing introducing residential into this corridor here. Our concern is just the limitation to the MRD district and the three stories that it limits us to.
Quick question. Do you have a proportion in mind in terms of R6 versus MRD? Is it, it sounds like it's going to be a lot of R6 or a small percentage?
Our plan is still coming together. I think what we were looking at is, you know, I guess I really don't have a, exactly.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if you did or not, but...
Yeah, not exactly. I think, you know, again, this is a, this being a future land use plan, I think would set some guidelines and parameters, not necessarily, it's not like we're rezoning today to specific areas. We're really looking at, you know, a master plan, which is going to, you know, allow certain visions, but it's going to give us some guidelines to follow. And if it's, if we're limited to MRD, it just restricts our ability to be flexible, particularly in a mixed-use district.
Anybody have any questions on the, yes, go ahead. Yeah, why don't you, why don't you go ahead, you know, with, we're going to take it one at a time, so.
So you're saying, okay, you want R6, you're saying three stories limited?
Yeah, he's looking at policy, under the policies, he's looking at policy 1.5.2A. So he would like R6 added into that policy. Instead of it being limited to MRD zoning, he would also like R6 thrown into that policy for, to allow that as a consideration in that particular area on the north side of Michigan Avenue, between Sheldon Road and the ITC Transmission Corridor.
RD plus R6, or include...
Well, he could then apply for any of those zoning classifications. He wouldn't have to apply for both. This is just a list of zoning classifications that can be considered in that area. So we've allowed the consideration of R6 on the south side of Michigan Avenue, near Sheldon Road, but we limited it in the policy to MRD on the north side because the direction I got from you is you wanted that a little bit more intense, you wanted it integrated with the commercial area, and those kinds of things. MRD and R6 are very different. They're both attached housing, but MRD does require a minimum of three stories. And we do get a lot of three-story townhouse development, but three stories can take a lot of different forms. Under R6, R6 would allow one- and two-story attached housing. So that's the big difference, is that MRD would make you go up instead of out.
Well, I didn't think that when we did, when we did make that designation, I didn't think that we, because it's going to come in pretty much as a planned development district that we would have the flexibility...
It doesn't necessarily come in as a planned development district. You have to look at this, if they zone it R6, that doesn't require them to do a plan development. They could come in and rezonate R6 and just do straight R6 zoning. So nothing, nothing here requires it to be done as a planned development. So you have to look at what the potential would be under straight zoning. So, I mean, in many cases, you know, under a planned development does allow some flexibility. You know, one of their concerns is, is if they're limited to MRD zoning, they're limited to three, three stories unless they come in and do a plan development and you grant a modification to this three-story requirement. So, but we can't force them to do a plan development. That's an option that they have to allow some flexible development, but, you know, that's something that you have to look at on whether or not, what form of development you would like on the north side. If one- and two-story development, you don't have a problem with that on the north side adjacent to the commercial, fine. That's not what we talked about in the study session, though, on the north side.
Keeping in mind that this is, it's a mixed-use vision and category that's being discussed here. What we're talking about are the components of that mixed-use.
Right, but they could separate, you know, it's a mixed-use designation, which means there's a lot of different zonings that can be considered within that area. That doesn't necessarily force the entire development to be mixed-use. So it's a mixed-use area on the master plan, but it's not in the sense of saying they have to do mixed-use development, okay? So we have to look at what potentially can be zoned for. I mean, they could take, take the entire area, you know, and zone it any one of the categories if you felt that was appropriate during a zoning action. So we don't know what kind of zoning application they're going to bring in on the north side of Michigan Avenue. MRD has commercial built into it as a mixed-use zoning category in itself, which is why we felt when we wrote the policy, it was appropriate to go on the north side of Michigan Avenue because it would encourage mixed-use development on it by, just by the nature of the zoning category itself. So I mean, in one case here, you could say, okay, you know, right now they're zone C3, the entire thing is zone C3. They could come in and do an R6 zoning for the entire thing. The master plan says R6 can be considered, and then you would have to make a determination whether or not you felt R6 was appropriate for whatever portion of it they bring in.
So by changing, by changing from, we're not changing from MRD, we're just not excluding R6 in the mixed-use designation?
That's what he's asking, is to include R6 as a consideration.
As a consideration, gotcha.
I mean, keeping, keeping in mind that this is sort of the highest level of a development. You know, we're talking master plan first, and then you're going to get more specific on a rezoning, and then we're going to come in with a site plan, which will be very specific to show you the plan that we're going to have. So on a master plan, you know, you're not talking about a speci, I can't show you a specific plan for a master plan, it's just more guidelines and sort of 30,000 feet, you know? So from my perspective, when I saw this, what concerned me again was that by not including R6 and limiting the residential to just an MRD, it just limits our flexibility to come in with something that is going to be of a mixed-use, something that fits what we think is going to work in this corridor here. So introducing that R6 is what we're asking, gives us some flexibility. We still, we still would have to come in with a rezoning, a PUD, a site plan, something specific to show you.
I mean, I mean, if you, if you feel that R6 is appropriate, what I would do is recommend that R6 as long as it's part of a mixed-use development. I would hate to see somebody come in and zone the entire thing R6 without any other component associated with it.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of, too.
Right.
And, but you're saying is that there's no, there's no way we can, we can lock that in that way?
Right, I mean, they can zone it and develop it as its own.
They could come in and do the entire thing R6.
If they apply for R6 without any conditions associated with the R6, you have no control over, other than allowing a site plan that would be allowed under R6, which would just be standard apartments or condos.
But again, this is a mixed, we're still talking about a mixed-use.
No, but if you come in with straight zoning, the mixed-use portion of the master plan just allows a wide variety of zoning classifications that can be considered in that particular area. It doesn't restrict anybody from applying for one zoning district over another. The Planning Commission then has to apply the zoning standards to that area and determine whether or not what they're asking for makes sense in the scheme of the surrounding and adjacent land uses. Okay, so right now, that area is all zoned commercial. So if they come in and say, okay, we want to zone everything on the west side of Morton Taylor, north of Michigan Avenue to R6, and not leave any of the commercial zoning there anymore, then you have to look at that zoning category based on its face and whether or not that's appropriate. That's not necessarily the intent of the mixed-use policies, especially policy, you know, 1.5.5, but once they zone it, that's their permitted, that's their vested use. So I guess my recommendation, based on what the original intent of it is, if the Planning Commission feels that R6 is an appropriate category to consider within the mixed-use area along the north side of Michigan Avenue, that you place a condition on it that it has to be part of a mixed-use development, that they can't just zone the whole thing R6.
Okay, so that...
Right, but you'd have to place, we have to place some language in here that it can't just be straight R6, it has to be R6 with something else.
Right, okay.
You add that language, but at the same time, a few minutes ago, you said this is not what we had planned.
Well, what we had talked about in the study session is creating, that's why the MRD zoning was the most appropriate zoning on the north side, because it's a mixed-use designation and incorporates commercial uses and residential uses. What they're talking about is R6, what they're concerned is, is forcing three-story development. You know, they may have a user that wants to do one- or two-story residential, maybe with some commercial out front, and you'll have to make a determination whether that's appropriate, whether they do it by straight zoning or whether or not they do it by plan development.
So if we...
But if you add R6 in there, you know, straight R6, you just may get straight R6, and they make an application for R6 zoning, that's maybe what you get.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I feel R6 is, is appropriate, but not entirely for the area. And I guess that's what I'm, I'm getting at, is how, how do you structure something where...
How do you allow it but restrict it? I don't know.
Right.
I mean, you need to, I mean, basically, you're going to be, if you're going in that direction, then you need to come up with language, and I can help you with that, to put in the plan, because you're going to be adopting these plan amendments tonight.
Right.
I mean, I would, you know, if that's something that you feel is appropriate, you would need to make a motion to amend policy 1.5.2A before you adopt it, by including R6 with some proviso on it. So you would need to come up with whatever proviso you felt was comfortable, given what your goal and what your vision is for that area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's doable.
Then we'd have to come up with the language tonight, or...
Well, yeah, I can help you do that. I mean, I can help wordsmith it, so. But I have, but until you make a motion, I, you know, I don't know the direction you're going with, so...
All right, well, Craig, do you have any response to this? Okay, and done? Same thing? Same thing? Everybody okay?
Isn't the language just set to say it's not exclusive? R6 can't be exclusive?
I don't want it to be exclusive.
Right.
Right.
As long as it's not exclusive and part of a mixed-use development. A planner will do it in a sentence, so. Okay, so the, you know, so you know, if you make a motion, the additional language be, would be at the end, it would be comma, "and R6," as long it is not exclusive and part of a mixed-use development.
And we're just talking about that one area along the north side of Michigan Avenue.
North side of Michigan Avenue between Sheldon and the ITC Corridor, right. The south side, we've already got R6 in there because we felt it was appropriate, because it's just adjacent to single-family uses in the Sheldon Village and those kinds of things. We feel that R6 was more appropriate down on the south side, where it wasn't as intense.
If we went in that direction, is that something you see as viable for...
I think that that works. I mean, I mean, we feel the same way. I don't think that the 90 acres that we control north of Michigan Ave is entirely marketable as R6, not, not the entire, you're not going to come in with 90 acres of that. Again, we're talking about a mixed-use, and having R6 as a component of that, we think, is important, so.
They may not ever own the property forever, and they may sell, and somebody may want to come in and do exclusively R6 there, and I think that's where the rub is here. Okay.
I think you understand where we're getting at. We have, we have R6 in the community, we don't have MRD, right? We're limited.
We have MRD zoning over in the Lots Road Corridor, and we have MRD zoning at Ford and Sheldon where we have the senior high rises.
Right, and so we're trying to just give a little variety of product going forward. You know, we're basically dealing with some of the last stretches in Canton, and so we want to get this right.
Understood. Appreciate your consideration here.
Okay, so that's one point, so...
Are there, why don't you call for any more comments on the policies?
Okay, all right. So any more, any more comments from the commission on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a question about, Jeff, you can answer this. Between three stories and R6, two stories, I mean, that would be, seems like...
R6 could be one and two stories. It's actually limited to 25 feet in height. MRD is three stories and to eight stories.
Housing also.
Housing, yeah.
So it seems like R6 or two, one and two-story would be a little bit more conducive for ADA also, is that correct, or...
Oh, you go more than, you know, essentially depending with the style of development. If you go more than one story and you go into two-story... If you go more than one story and you go into two-story, you know, rental-type communities, you're doing elevators. So it doesn't really make any difference, so.
Any further comments? So we don't have to come up with a motion on this one just yet, right?
Not until you're done with the public hearing, right.
Okay, all right.
We'll take them one at a time, and you can make your motions on each one, right?
Okay, all right. Any further comments on this particular area?
Item one, right.
Item one, yes, sir, come on up.
Want to follow up, my name is Richard Sable, I'm here for Marketplace, it owns that property that we're discussing. And I agree with the comments that are being made by the planning commission. And just wanted to point out that what this does is allow us to take into account the changing economic conditions that are going on within the community. We just don't know how to approach this, but we definitely know that it'll most likely be a mixed-use product over there.
Agreed, I agree.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on this? All right, so we'll move on to...
Why don't you just go down the list to items two, three, and see if they have any comments on... Why don't you just go down the list, and then they can make comments on the item that you're discussing? Item two would be the northwest, northeast sector map.
This way?
Yeah. App two proposed?
Went too far there. There's number two.
Number two, all right, okay, now I...
Here's the proposed map up on the screen.
I don't know, up from down? Future land use map, northeast quadrant, okay. Which we're talking about, the area from Napier, was it Napier, and going south, Napier going east?
Basically along the Copernick Road area.
Copernick, oh, that...
Yeah, this is item number two.
Northeast, northeast, I'm sorry, I'm thinking northwest.
Yeah, this is the northeast corner of the township where we've got industrial and residential uses along the railroad. So this one we've discussed several times. The conditional zoning was for the area at Copernick here on the railroad. The other ones are existing uses, you've got Holiday Park, you've got the existing county park, you've got the Mobile Home Park. So essentially, it's just a reflection of the existing uses. This is a change from the current master plan, because under the old master plan, it was under the old overlay district. So we just needed to reflect what uses there and what was currently zoned.
Okay, any comments on this area?
Taking it out of the Lots Road corridor study, right.
Comments from the commission? Okay.
Hey, item three.
Item three, a future land use map, areas that are designated rural residential, which Jeff had discussed earlier. Most of those, I believe, are in the northwest section.
Yeah, we've got Area A, which is the northwest, we've got the area along Napier Road next to South of Ford Road, and we've got the area, which is, I think, is incorporated by the Woods of Central Park currently. So just to make it consistent with what the rest of Central Park is designated.
Low and very low-density residential. Okay, any questions on that, any concerns, heartburns?
Nope.
Okay.
Comments from the audience on that area?
Comments from the audience. All right, so let's go to future land use map, Michigan Avenue between Lots and Hanen.
Just changing that area from commercial and industrial to mixed-use, so.
Now, mixed-use there, we designated, what ingredients?
Office, light industrial, and C3 commercial. The rest, like the rest of the mixed-use areas are.
Light industrial, but not light industrial research?
No, because it's on the south side, it doesn't abut residential. On the north side, where we've got light industrial, it's light industrial research. On the south side, where it abuts general industrial, we just kept it as LI.
Any comments from the audience on that? How about from the commission? Yes?
So that, we're just looking at number four now, right, or not four and five, just four?
No, just four.
So we're looking at, I'm sorry, just...
Change from light industrial and commercial to mixed-use. Does that make the area pink? Sort of allow it to go both, either direction, so. Any comments? Nope.
Thing, nothing? Okay, I don't have any heartburn with that. And then number five, this is the Percy request, north of Yost and west of Sheldon.
And we have Mr. Percy here tonight that would like to address that item.
Hello.
Yeah, my name is Matthew Percy, Vice President of AD Transport Express. We've been in Canton for approximately 22 years now.
That all?
Pardon me, yeah, that's all. Employee probably close to about 700 employees down at our place. This section here that we're proposing to go G1, we had purchased that from Poco just recently. Basically, this piece of property is to help expand for our future growth here in Canton. We do own south of Yost Road also in Van Muren Township, so we kind of own that whole corridor all the way to the railroad tracks. We purchased this piece of property to help for future expansion. It's nothing that we have on our plans currently right now. It's just something to help us move forward. We built a relationship with Poco. We purchased this piece of property from him, and we're looking to move forward with this sometime in the future. No change, no difference in this piece of property. But since everything is classified to the west with AD Transport, is all G1, as you can see in the purple map there. So we're looking to possibly get that change put in place, get this section of the 16 acres put into G1 currently, and for our future growth, so we can take care of this at the current time. So this is what we're looking to do with this piece of property. I know they're looking for the vacation of Yost Road, which is in the process now. Again, this is our second try at this. So we're looking at moving forward with this project, with your consideration, so.
Okay, any comments from the audience on this? Any comments from the commission?
So by vacation, you're saying they're looking at retiring it because it's wooded with the wetlands, basically?
Well, the road right-ofway is being looked at for vacation by Wayne County, which would then, the future road right-ofway would be eliminated, and they would basically then own that portion of the right-ofway. So the 16 acres he's talking about does, you know, has some woods and wetlands on it, has a drain that runs through the middle of it. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be a difficult parcel to deal with from a development standpoint, anyway. But, you know, that's their cross to bear when they get to it. So your decision tonight is whether or not to leave it light or to change it to general.
General would make it for trucking, and it's weight-restricted, so you'd have to build the new road then, basically.
Well, the access will be through our property that's to the west of it. That's all part of AD Transport Express. So everything will access into Belleville Road and onto Yost Road. So there would be no access to Sheldon Road at that time, knowing it's a Class A road.
Yeah, they own all the property all the way out to Belleville Road.
Yes, and also with the drain, the drain existing goes through our property to the west with no issues, no problems, and no restrictions. So the drain really wouldn't be that much of an issue.
Any downside to doing this?
I mean, Poco did make a request to hop onto your request because they wanted the rest of their property designated general industrial, and I talked to them, and you know, that abuts Sheldon Road and has access to Sheldon Road. They don't necessarily need to use Sheldon Road. You know, it's up to you on whether or not you feel like, you know, having an open yard with truck storage on it is a good idea there. I mean, that's up to you. I mean, you know, we've, this has been designated light industrial for the past 30 years.
Quick comment, if I can make it, please, is if we go G1, and you continue with G1, and Poco goes to G1, that I think will help move to taking Sheldon Road to a Class A road, which I think is needed. That's my opinion, with as much industrial stuff you have on that south side, you have the DPW there. I think moving in that direction will help take Sheldon Road to a Class A road.
Well, Sheldon Road should be a Class A road, but in order to get it to Class A road, one is, there's two different things. There's a county primary, which we're in the process of getting it designated as a county primary. The second issue is a Class A road, that's how the road is constructed. The only way the road's going to get constructed, if all the property owners there agree to a special assessment sister to pay to reconstruct it. The county has no money, nor will they have any money in the future to basically rebuild Sheldon Road as a concrete Class A road. So one of the issues, Matthew, is, the only way we did this was Haggerty Road, you know, north of Ford Road 25 years ago, all the property owners ended up having to pay to reconstruct that road to Class A standards to support heavy industrial traffic. So the issue is, is one, is his piece, the rest of it is not, you know, it was not even in front of us now, so. He doesn't write, abut Sheldon Road right now, nor will he use Sheldon Road. But, you know, the issue is, is how, what do we want Sheldon Road to be in the future is another question for another day. It's not before us tonight, I mean, you make a good point, yeah. But most of our, you know, most of our light industrial businesses could actually use a Class A road. It doesn't need to be general industrial, because a lot of our manufacturers and, you know, things like Poco, in certain times of the year, Poco is restricted from how much loads they can put on their truck with all of their signs and things, because Sheldon is only a Class B road. So just as, even from a light industrial standpoint, to support manufacturing, yeah, Sheldon Road needs to be a class, you know, be rebuilt as a Class A road. That's not, that's not in the county's, you know, road plans in the near future, so. So that's kind of a, that's a whole nother, you know, that's a whole nother thing.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
Yeah, aside, I'm sorry, aside from the road classification, are there other advantages to you to going GI as opposed to LI?
Well, he cannot expand his truck business under LI zoning.
Yeah, so...
Plans to expand to the future, that's why I would support taking it to general industrial. Doesn't have any plans yet, but since we're doing it, let's...
So it's just for possible expansion?
Yes, yes, please.
Anybody else have any concerns? Wonderful. All right, then let's move on to number six.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, thank you very much. Number six, future land use map, Beaumont request, north of Michigan Avenue, west of Beck. Yes, sir.
How are you today?
Good, and yourself?
I'm doing great. My name's Randy Thomas, I'm President and CEO of Insight Commercial. I'm Beaumont's representative here today, and I do have a gentleman who's the real estate manager for Beaumont here in the off, or in the seat here, if we have any questions. What we're proposing today is to, in your future land map, or land map, future land use, rather, is to, we've got a petition in, when I talked with Kristen Thomas and Jeff, and they suggested, based on what Beaumont's plans are, this piece was initially bought by Oakwood Hospital with the plans in developing under the PDD existing today, you know, various uses in that PDD. Since then, since the merger with Beaumont and Oakwood, those plans have changed. So this property, along with two other properties, one in Commerce and Independence Township, have all gone up for sale. And during, before the process, we did a market analysis for them so that they could expect values and potential uses. And oddly enough, all three, we saw that there was some sort of, you know, potential on the residential side with small, commercial, or ancillary commercial that would support, you know, the community. And when we went through the process, that's exactly what we, you know, saw from the market and coming to us. So what's in front of you today is to propose to change the future land use, which is currently light industrial, to medium to high-density residential. Pulte was awarded the contract. We're currently working on the purchase agreement on behalf of Pulte. Pulte was not able to make it here today. Their intent, you know, for the property is to have some mixed residential in there, some single-family, potentially, some senior living, along with multifamily, and potentially items that are currently in the PDD, such as daycare, would be some of the, you know, the uses, as they shared it with me today. I don't have a site plan. You know, they're in the planning processes right now. But Jeff, you know, thought it'd be a good idea to get this in front of you now while you were going through the, you know, the five-year plan for the future land use.
So what you're proposing there is kind of a mixed-use within that site in terms of the different residential uses?
It would be primarily...
As opposed to, let's say, just straight R6 or something?
Correct, yeah, it would be primarily residential, and I think you're going to see, because it's a large site, you know, it's 97 acres. So what you'll see probably are, you know, components of it. And again, maybe, there may be like a childcare or something that would support, you know, the community. But it's a transitional piece of property, because if you've got the residential both to the west and to the north, and as you're going down towards Michigan Avenue, this is a transitional piece before you get to the, you know, the industrial that's on Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, so this change would allow a potential rezoning to R6 from the LIR zoning. R6 allows for attached housing, it allows for daycare, it allows for assisted living, and a lot of those other types of attached or institutional uses under R6. So again, we can't guarantee what will come in under a zoning scheme, but you need to make a determination of whether or not this property is more suitable, you know, up to a medium-high-density residential as a primarily residential use versus a light industrial research use. When Oakwood had it, their plan development was a mixed-use development, but it didn't have really any residential components to it. Any residential component would be mostly institutional, like assisted living, senior kind of housing, those kinds of things that would be associated in and amongst a medical complex, which was, you know, Oakwood's kind of expansion scheme, long-term expansion schemes at that point. Obviously, since the merger, you know, with Beaumont, you know, I think they're getting rid of a lot of their excess property that they feel that they don't need any longer after the merger, so. So obviously, that plan expires next year, anyway, and so we just need to make a determination of what that use should be. I've talked to the property owner just to the west, the 40-acre piece, just to the north of the drain. He would also like to go medium-high-density residential, that's not part of this request, nor did we have time to get it in to the request for consideration. But you may even see a future request for more land to the west, out towards Denton Road, going in that direction. I would not support going any further south than the drain. I think the Michigan Avenue frontage, given what's happening with, you know, the car research facilities out at Willow Run and everything that's going along with all those affiliated businesses, we're going to need some industrial property along Michigan Avenue as carryover development from Willow Run and the auto industry expansion. But as we go further north, north of the drain, you know, then that becomes, industrial becomes less viable north of the drain, I believe. Yeah, the drain is the curved line there, yeah. So there's actually a pond, where the little curve goes into the Oakwood piece, that's actually the pond area north of the existing building.
Mentioned a possible single-family component as well.
You could only do single-family under R6, as, you know, what they would do is they would come in with R6 zoning to get their base zoning. Single-family could be a component under a mixed-use, like PUD.
Why wouldn't we just keep it mixed-use, then?
Have a mixed-use zoning designation.
I mean, rather than doing just all residential, could we...
I mean, you can designate it mixed-use, but mixed-use in that area doesn't allow residential. Mixed-use in that area only allows light industrial or office or C3.
Have your senior citizen homes, or maybe even medical offices, or more businesses, research businesses, right?
Primary use is projected to be attached housing. We need to just say it's going to be attached housing. If we have other components that come in with that, you know, it's going to be primarily one thing or the other. There may be some less intense uses, like some single-family, smaller lots, single-family, or detached towns, or something like that, that would be more senior-oriented type of single-family housing, similar to what's going on with Grandview and Crystal Village there on Denton Road. Those are detached towns. I can see that being a component in here as part of, we've got detached towns up in Chatterton. There's detached condos already in Chatterton under the R6 zoning. That was a PUD that was done a long time ago by Selective. So I can see those being components under a plan development, but R6 would be the base, starting point.
So could, can we request... that component in terms of institutionalized, single-family? As opposed to-
Well, you can't get that, at this level-
You can't get that specific?
You can't get that specific.
Okay.
Unless we develop very detailed policy language like we, you know, did in other areas, and I think in this area, that'd be too specific.
Yeah, because I could see R6 there, but I, single-family, I just don't, I don't really see unless it is a specific purpose related to something.
Well, you might have some single-family up in the northwest corner, where you actually have single-family in Chatterton already.
That's why I see more mixed-use there, because if you're talking about, like you were saying, the automotive center of research.
But we don't, but as a mixed-use designation, that's a transition area, like right along Michigan Avenue. If we developed a mixed-use policy with this area, I'd have to start over and start from scratch in designating what subpolicies you wanted in that mixed-use policy. So we would have to add what zoning categories you wanted to consider in that area, and I would have to, like, do a subpolicy under, we could do that. But I think if it's going to be primarily residential from a future land use standpoint, you know, that's going to, you know, we're looking at a big picture here of that area. Do you want it to be industrial, or do you want it to be primarily residential? From a sewer standpoint, there's no difference.
We're industrial just below it, right? Because like you said, we're looking for jobs, research jobs.
Oakwood's plan, basically, we did sewer analysis for Oakwood when they came through with their institutional uses and things. It was pretty comparable to what R6 would be from a sewer standpoint. So we have, you know, so the utility master plans, you know, wouldn't have any impact on whatever change you wanted to make here. That's all supported. It's just a matter of what primary use you'd like to see here. You know, as Randy said, I think you're not going to see 97 acres of condos here. The market's not going to absorb that much condo. So you're going to see different housing products, similar to what we did, like with the BW East project, you know, for Wellington on the Willow. You know, if you see a residential, you're going to see it subbed out into different types of, of product, just because, you know, one, one, one product over 97 acres isn't, isn't going to be absorbed very easily or very quickly. Is that correct?
Correct. Is that, is R6, does that present any transitional problems to the LI below it?
LIR below it. LIR below it was intended to provide a transition to the residential above it. That's why we have LIR on the north side, because in certain areas, the LIR provides additional setbacks, additional buffer areas, additional use restrictions in it that are more compatible with, with, you know, attached residential. So LIR was intended to be kind of that transitional area between Michigan Avenue and the higher-intensity residential uses along Gettys.
Yeah, the question is to go to medium-high-density residential, that's the question.
That's correct.
Right.
I would support that, as long as it's all north of the drain and then south of the drain.
Right.
It stays what it is. I think that gives them the most flexibility.
I would agree.
Could you just talk about your analysis a little bit? You said you did a market analysis.
Yes, yeah, we did. You know, and it was, it was really primarily for, you know, for Beaumont, as to pricing, uses, where the market is today, because, you know, the markets evolve and, you know, like, drugstores were, were big 10, 12 years ago. Now you don't see a new drugstore being built because, you know, most of it's been built out. So the trend that we're seeing in, in the markets that I, you know, shared with you, you know, Commerce and Independence Township, they all pretty much were very similar, is to what to expect from the market. And, you know, the results, we used a call-for offers method, which basically is just short of an auction, and it forces the market to come out and put, you know, highest and best offers out. And I think we had, what, nine offers? Nine or 10 offers? We only had one non-residential offer that was on there, and it's the gentleman that owns the 40 acres that Jeff mentioned to the west, in the little purple piece right there.
No, he wants to go the other direction, so.
What's that?
No, he wants to go the other direction.
Right. So, you know, in all of those, we had, you know, from single-family to multiple-family. That's what we shared with, you know, what to expect. There may be a small, you know, commercial, a commercial component to it, but they would be neighborhood-oriented. There wouldn't be any big boxes or anything else. So that's what we shared with them. We really thought that's what would happen, and that's what did happen.
Further comments from the audience on this? We do still have a public hearing open? All right. The commission, any further discussion on this one? All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Dodson and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? It went in this first, yes. Yeah, have fun. Okay, yes.
Okay. So now that you've closed the public hearing, you can either do motions one at a time for items one through six, or you can make a global motion and incorporating all of those with the change to policy 1.5.2A to include R6, as long as it's not exclusive and part of a mixed-use development. So if everybody's supportive of the remainder of the proposed amendments, that would probably be the easiest motion to make. And then you can, if there's any discussion, you can discuss it, so.
Were you making a motion? Sorry, just one more. Sorry, I'm sorry, Jeff, in here you wrote, items, you recommend approval of items one, two, three, four, and six, of course with the verbiage, but you also said item five would have special, some potential impact on the woodland and wetland areas, but that would be for Wayne County to decide.
Right. So I just wanted to make you sure there were some environmental issues on this property, and that might have some bearing on whether or not you wanted to go to heavy instead of keeping it light, so.
Before you go, I do have a question, too. It's a verbiage question. Policy 1.5.5, the use of planned development district or optional conditional zoning process is encouraged. I understand that language. It seems like for what we want, it needs to be a little stronger. Is there a possibility of stronger than encouraged?
We can't require it, they're optional. If they want to use straight zoning, we can't, you know, we can't make them do, and that's what my whole discussion about the north side was, if you allow a certain zoning district, you can't force them into a planned development.
Right.
And that's why we would then need to put a proviso in there that makes sure it was not exclusive, so.
Okay.
I don't know how other-
I had to get that out of the way.
Because we're looking at a big picture here, we're not looking at zoning right now, but we need to, but these are going to be our policies that we look at when a zoning application comes in.
I'm just trying to maintain our flexibility and control at the same time, and the way to do that, I, as I see it, would be through a planned development district.
And like in this particular area on the plan right now, it says, "Plan development recommended." So there are certain areas on the plan, on the big plan, that we have notes where plan development is recommended. So, so that recommendation on this particular, on the plan is not changing that necessarily notation on the plan, it's just changing the underlying land use classification.
Oh, and I do have a question on repealing the remaining portion of the corporate park overlay district at, on the Lots Road corridor.
We've repealed the north portion. We started repealing portions of the area along Ford Road so we could replace it with the central business district overlay, and that's where we came into a problem a year or so ago, and then they didn't do anything more. So the goal is still to get rid of the corporate park overlay district and replace the areas along Ford Road with the, with the central business district overlay.
Okay, and so this, this amendment would do that?
This is still encouraging that repeal, right? Yeah. So then you would just have straight zoning with the central business district overlay instead of the corporate overlay district, which has its own set of uses, so.
Okay. All right, are you ready?
No, not at, I'm not-
Not now? You, you just lost your thought process? Yeah.
So I move to approve and adopt the proposed amendments.
Sure, Mike, uh?
Gosh, no one's heard anything I've said all night. I move to approve and adopt the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan as provided in the draft text and map excerpts in the packets as summarized in items 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 3C, 4, 5, and 6 above, except that we would like to amend policy 1.5.2A to include R6 zoning designation as part of a mixed-use residential, or, excuse me, R6 as part of a mixed-use development, and R6 cannot be exclusive. Does that say what we needed it to say?
R6 as long as it's not exclusive and part of a mixed-use development.
You know, I read the wrong note, you're right. That's the one I meant to read.
Okay.
Comma, and R6, as long as it's not exclusive and part of a mixed-use development.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. Further discussion on this motion? Does it have everything we need to encompass? You feel comfortable with it? Okay, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on this, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Congratulations, we have a new master plan, so.
Awesome.
This will be transmitted to the board for their acceptance, their meeting in December, and then-
And thank, and thank you all for participating in this with us. Appreciate it. Okay. Where are we here? Agenda, agenda.
There's a few new business items, right?
We've got staff referral, new business. Do I hear a motion to move that to the staff? Uptown Apartments PDD?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye? Aye? All right, and then we've got a set public hearing for December 4th, which sadly is somebody's last meeting with us. Do I hear a motion to set the public hearing for Summer Park Bixler zoning and Canton, Michigan Avenue development rezoning?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right. Any further discussions, reports, anything?
Well, you guys just need to deci- decide on when and where you're having your farewell dinner, so.
I hear a motion to, well, let's, let's adjourn first.
Yeah.
I was going to get to that.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. We are adjourned. Okay, now.